Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Gloucester zoning Board of Appeals meeting of January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. This is a high-bread meeting. We're a public meeting in person, and we also have a Zoom link for people to participate at home. The Zoom link number, meeting ID, for the record, is eight-one-five zero-four-two-four-one-eight-one-four. I recognize members in attendance, myself, Joe Parisi, Vice Chair Catherine Schlichty, Peter Canavo, and James Gilardi's on via Zoom. So we have four members present and voting, and I declare a quorum. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
I make the motion for approval of the minutes for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Minutes are approved. Our consent agenda is the approval of the chair to sign the following decisions: Fourteen Prospect Street, forty-six to forty-six rear Englewood Road, four Pigeon Lane, and one Highland Street. I'd like to take a motion.
Just approve. Approval of the chair to sign the following decisions. Make a motion for Fourteen Prospect Street, forty-six, forty-six side Englewood Road, four Pigeon Lane, and one Highland Street.
Second.
And seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, our first continued. Well, we got a little out of order here, but we'll take the, uh, our first new business is the election of officers. We need a motion to appoint, elect the chairman, the vice chair, and the secretary of the board for two thousand twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion to select Chairman Joe Parisi, Vice Chair Catherine Schlichty, and Secretary Michael Nyman.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Canavo?
I'd yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, our first order of business. We have a petition of Cory and Gabriella D. Benedictus seeking to extend a previously granted special permit for the property located at seven Mechanic Place and nine Mechanic Place. Who's representing? You gotta unmute Cory.
Hello? Is that, is that working?
Yep. Name and address for the record.
Yep, seven Mechanics Place and nine Mechanics Place, Gloucester, Mass.
Your name and address. Where do you live?
Cory D. Benedictus, seven Mechanics Place, Gloucester, Mass.
Thank you. Go ahead. So we do have the ability to extend the previously granted special permits. It needs to be for good cause. Could you just tell us why?
Yeah, we're just in the process of trying to get more funding for the projects themselves as they're going to be quite costly, and we're just looking at extension for those reasons. And the second reason is we're currently going through the process of the Conservation Committee as well, and there was just a holdback with them being so busy at the time, and we're finally getting some progress.
Were you scheduled with ConCon?
Not at the moment. We're still going through the planning process.
Okay, because that would be a legitimate reason for continuance. Financing wouldn't be, but with respect to the Conservation Commission problem.
Uh-huh. So we have the, we have the process going at the moment, and we're just waiting for the, uh, the final plans to get sent to them so they can make an appointment.
Yeah. Yeah. So you're looking for an extension of this special permit for a year?
Uh, yeah, however long you can give it to us for.
Yeah, that's the maximum.
Okay.
So you'll have to have construction, you have to begin construction within that year.
Okay, yes, please.
All right. Let me make a motion.
Yeah, the discussion, I don't, we don't need public testimony to extend. I want to see a motion to extend.
I make a motion on the petition of Cory and Gabriella D. Benedictus seeking to extend, extend a previously granted special permit for the property located at seven Mechanics, uh, lot, place, for
There are two special permits.
And two special permits, uh, for one year.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes, on both.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Okay, you've heard our decision. You have a one-year extension.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, our next hearing is the petitioner of GX-PH to the Third Power LLC seeking a special permit pursuant under one-point-eight, two-point-three-point-nine subsection nine for restaurant with outdoor seating or takeout at one Gloucester Crossing, Building C. Do we have a representative? Go ahead. Name and address for the record, please, and then we'll go.
Sure. My name is Tim Power with PVI Site Design and from eighteen Glendale Road, Norwood. Here is the engineer representing the applicant, Gloucester Commons and GXPH three.
Oh, yeah, could you tell us?
Sure.
What you're doing.
So we're here requesting a special permit, as you noted, for a outdoor seating and quick-service use restaurants at Gloucester Crossing. This will be in, I'll call it the Home Goods Building at the very end space before you go to the Starbucks building. I don't know if I can connect my computer, but I'm happy to bring up the plan on the screen if I can. It is in the packet. That location is there.
Can you get into the mic closer, hold it? Because at home, they can't hear it all.
Sure. How's that? Hopefully, that's better. And so what we're just looking to do is obviously a special permit for the use. It's intended to be a trippolte, which is heavily on takeout, and they're looking to do a small outdoor patio. We included some plans and details. We know the, the board requires safety bollards around the patio, which we included and noted. Similar to what they have at Starbucks, there'll be bollards. I think the railing is incorporated into that as well.
Yep, that's what we're always looking for, safety.
And you said this is going to be in the space just after the Home Goods store?
No, the, the very end space in that building, Mass.
Oh, in that? Oh, okay.
It'll be right in.
Okay.
It's this corner.
Okay.
You'll look out the window at the T-Mobile.
Is there a golf thing in there?
That's the only way to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, anybody?
Outdoor area.
Okay.
How many, how many seats in this? How many people can sit? How, how, how many seats are in this outdoor area?
Um, I should know this one off the top of my head. It's not many.
Oh, it doesn't look like.
Four hundred square feet, I guess.
Yeah, four hundred square feet, so.
It's limited by that. Yeah.
Yeah, there's balls.
So they're copying the Starbucks and
Yeah.
And what we're gonna require for the golfing place, so.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see if there's any public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Either please come forward if you're here. If you're at home, hit your raise hand button on your device. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application for the outdoor seating? Any, any objections? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Um, yeah, we've approved several of these. Our only condition is that the building inspector is satisfied with how they build it for the safety standards that we've established, so I don't see any problem with it. Anybody else? Okay with that.
On the petition of GXPH three LLC seeking the special permit pursuant to GZO one-point-eight and two-point-three-four, section nine, for a restaurant with outdoor seating or takeout at one Gloucester Crossing, Building C, I would move approval of the special permit for outdoor seating and takeout.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Are our decisions favorable? We'll get a decision together and out to you. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we're into our new applications tonight. There are four. First is the petition of Richard Crowell seeking a special permit under five-point-two-point-four with variances pursuant to three-point-two-point-one for rear and side yard setbacks in order to convert a pre-existing accessory structure into an ADU at twenty-six Leverett Street.
Yes, Richard Crowell, twenty-six Leverett Street.
Can you make sure you get that mic? And you can take it off.
Richard Crowell, twenty-six Leverett Street.
Yep. Okay.
Um, yes, I would take a pre-existing, it was a dwelling at one time, turn it back into a dwelling and ADU if I'm on my property to live in myself.
Yeah. There'll be no external changes to the structure?
No external changes whatsoever.
Yeah.
And to bring everything, rewire, replumb, bring everything up to code, and to move into it myself.
Yeah, and it looks like a, like a studio with a bathroom on it. Pretty modest. Yeah.
Yep. And it's the same footprint, so yeah, we're just approving the rear and side yard setback.
And the special permit for
And special permit for
Yeah, and that's because change of use kicks in the need for them. Okay. Um, yeah, seems pretty straightforward, I guess.
Okay, we'll take testimony from the public. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor of the application? Please come forward.
Rebecca Reynolds. I live at twenty-nine Ferry Street. I'm the executive director at the Manship Artist Residency, and I'm just here as a neighbor to support his application.
Yeah, you're the, that's the abutting property, correct?
Yeah.
And it's closest to your property, yeah.
That's correct. In fact, it used to be owned by Manship a long time ago. There was a trade with the neighbors.
Ah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Beautiful out there.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Having none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Seeing no one online, no one stepping forward, we'll close the public hearing and discussion by the board.
No, it's just, I, I do think there's a hardship. I mean, you'd have to move the whole building to kind of, uh, come into compliance with the setbacks. A butter who's most affected is not concerned about the use. It's a pretty modest proposal. I would support it.
I would have to agree. I don't see an issue with that. Okay, James, you want to make a motion?
Sure. On the petition of Richard Crowell seeking a special permit pursuant to GZO five-point-two-four with variances, variances pursuant to GZO one-point-seven, three-point-two-point-one for rear and side yard setbacks in order to convert a pre-existing accessory structure into an ADU at twenty-six Leverett Street, I move for approval.
Second. Have a motion made and seconded for a special permit for an ADU and variances with rear and side yard setback. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I also vote yes. The hardship shown for the setbacks and perfect time, place for an ADU. Thank you. We'll be, we'll put a decision together and get it out to you as soon as we can. Thank you very much. Okay, next hearing is the petition of HB Development Corp. seeking a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure, one-point-nine, two-point-four-point-three with variances pursuant to three-point-two-point-one and four-point-one for front, rear, side yard setback, lot width, area, and frontage, percentage of vegetative cover, and to allow parking in front yard setbacks in order to convert a single-family home to a multifamily with four units at nine-sixty-four Washington Street, represented by Attorney Frontero.
Good evening. Sal Frontero for the petitioners. Just give me one moment to try to clear the screen here. My connection keeps going in and out, so, Tasha, do you mind? As soon as it went on, my connection went out.
But didn't let you join?
No, it's back. Try, try it again?
I'll promote you. I'll try one more time. I haven't pulled up if you need to.
Okay. Still not working. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Again, Sal Frontero, forty-six Middle Street for the petitioners. And with me today, I have David Barrett, who is the principal of HB Development Corp., and I also have Joe Barrett, who is the site manager. The premises located nine-sixty-four Washington Street in the Bayview-Lanesville area of Gloucester, near the UMass Marine Station on the west side of Washington Street. It's in the R-twenty zoning district. The site consists of a narrow L-shaped building, if you could go to the site plan. And it's in the middle of the lot. There you go. Thank you. It formerly housed a church, as many of you know, from the, up until the early seventies. At that time, it was purchased by the Malinsky family, and at that time, it had two structures on it, a house and the church. And Malinsky ended up separating the two buildings, and you'll see that other building shown on the site plan. That is the Malinsky home, and she does still reside there. So back in the seventies, they did an A and R and divided this into two lots. And my research indicates that since that time, since the early seventies, it's been used off and on as a single-family, a two-family. It's also been used, I guess, for the Gloucester Stage here and there, for a daycare facility. However, now it's pretty much vacant, and it's, it's in a rundown condition. I'm sure you know the building we're talking about, the Blue Church on Washington Street. It's a nice old building, and it's, it's very important to the neighborhood as well. The petitioner, again, desires to convert to a four-family use and wishes to keep the church intact. Bought the build, they bought the property recently, and after looking at everything, the only, they want to keep the church, and the only economically viable way to do that is to have four units, because it's a very challenging property with high ceilings, a lot of construction involved. And so it's, it's a challenging project. We really want to do, keep that, keep that structure in place if at all possible. And the site manager can speak to the construction-related issues and the challenges there if you'd like. If not, I can move on.
Yeah, go.
Okay. Want to move on?
You were going to talk about what, the site?
Say, the, the site manager can speak about the construction challenges if you want, and to why it's, it's necessary to have four units to make this economically viable. Otherwise, they'd have to raise the building, we believe, and put a new structure there.
Yeah. Well, we're just giving you the, you're just here seeking dimensional relief from
Yes, but, but I think the four, the four-unit use is relevant to that inquiry here, because we wanted to give the reason why we're doing it, because it is, the lot's on the smaller side, so I wanted to kind of give the reasons for that. Again, we want to convert to a four-family use, and as to parking, you see on the site plan, there are two spaces out front, accessed through Washington Street. There is no curb cut there presently. We did speak to Mike Hale about a curb cut permit, and he sounded like he was inclined to give us that, but he was a little bit concerned about the size of the entryway. He wants it reduced to twelve feet. We may negotiate that up a little bit, plus the curb apron. So in the event that this board is inclined to approve this application, I would ask that the, that it contain a condition that we can modify the entrance to the front driveway, front parking area, without having to come back to the board, if possible. Again, we won't be enlarging it, so I don't think it's much of an issue there. If we were enlarging it, I think we would have to come back. So right now, it's showing as twenty feet. It may be less than that. So, and the rest of the parking, as you can see, is in the rear, and that's accessed through the Sanist's Court that's there. There is one parallel parking space in the rear, and then there are five perpendicular spaces, all dimensionally compliant. Now, the R-twenty zoning district requires six spaces. We thought it appropriate to provide eight. In this day and age, a lot of people have two cars, so we thought eight would be better. And as far as the building goes, if you can give me the floor plans if you wouldn't mind? Keep going. There you go. Okay. I believe that is basement, the first floor. So what it will consist of is a three-family, excuse me, a three-bedroom unit on the first floor, three-bedroom on the second floor. You can scroll through as if you like, Tasha. And then the third and fourth, the fourth floor will have two bedroom units, but they'll be two stories. So if you've ever been in there, that, the ceilings are really, really high.
Yeah.
And they're about as high as they are in here, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to, to have one unit. It would be incredibly hard to heat it as well. So I don't think it would be marketable in that, in that regard. So as far as the building itself goes, if you could go to the elevations, um, most of the relief we're asking for is not really, I mean, if you look at what we're asking, it looks like we're asking for a lot, but none of it involves, almost none of it involves construction. The proposed, as you know, when you change use to a new dimensional category, you lose all of your legally non-conforming rights. And I know there's a move afoot now to sort of change that in Gloucester. We'll be bumped for the council soon, that we won't have necessarily do this in this type of situation with a pre-existing structure, but that is not in place yet, so we're asking for a myriad of relief as a result of that. The other reason that's kind of odd that we're asking for a lot of relief is that when you look at multifamilies, the height's thirty feet, that's allowed, excuse me, the, the setbacks are forty-five feet, thirty feet and forty feet. However, for every foot above fifty feet, you got to add a foot of setback. So this steeple, which is sixty-nine point seven feet high, is causing an artificially large setback requirement for the yard. And I don't think there's any way that that was contemplated by the zoning ordinance. I think it was probably contemplated to have that additional space because of lighting and air and things like that. But the steeple is not narrow enough to be excluded. It is included, so that is causing artificially high setback requirements. And as far as the expansion of the building itself, if we could go to the elevations, Tasha? There you go. Next one down. Right, nope, right there. Yep, next one. Next one down. Right there, thank you. So most of the changes to the building involve windows, roofs over entryways, new doors, window wells. The only construction of substance is rear, rear decks at the back for, for second means of egress. That's really the only expansion of the footprint at all. So, and that's necessary means of egress. So although we're asking for a lot of relief, it really is not that much change construction-wise. And as you can see, the, the nature of the church and the character of it will still be maintained after, after construction. As to the abutters, we were careful to talk to all the abutters. David Barrett knocked on doors, talked to everybody, and did not hear any opposition. He did hear a common theme that they want the church to stay. So the, the people in the neighborhood do like the church. Again, the, Tanya Malinsky is still living in that building next door. She's the neighbor most affected, so obviously, we really went out of our way to make sure she was happy. And about, on Monday, I believe, I wanted to get it in before the seventy-two hour deadline, we submitted an agreement signed by my client regarding what we want to do for Ms. Malinsky to make her happy. She has since countersigned it, and I would suggest that if the, if this board is inclined to give the relief we're asking for, that those, the conditions, the elements of that agreement be, be incorporated into any decision. And it's basically cobblestone, she wants a fence, she wants a new stone, a new stairway, which I believe most of it's been done, and she wants the lot line marked off with cobblestones, among other stuff. Most of it's been done, so she is actually satisfied. Again, we didn't hear any significant opposition at all from the neighbors, and we were careful to talk to them all. As far as a relief sought, we're looking for a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure, a variance from section four-point-one-four, so allow parking in the front yard setback area. And we're asking for dimensional variances for lot area, lot width, lot frontage, front yard, left and side yard, left and right yard setback, and rear yard setback. And again, the only one that's getting any construction is a rear yard setback. We want to go seven-point-eight feet more into the setback for the purposes of accommodating the second means of egress in the form of the three-decker porch. And also, we're looking for a variance for the vegetative cover to go below the sixty-five percent. So as to the special permit, as you know, anything other than a single and two-family, it's only a single-prong analysis, not a two. We just look at whether the proposed construction and the building as proposed will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building. And if we go back to the site plan? Be good. The buildings, the, the building on site presently does not comply with right side yard setback. It's very close to the lot line, I think three-point-eight feet. Go back again, if you don't mind. I was having the same problems.
Three-point-nine.
That's all right. But anyway, the only thing we're doing on the right side of the building is adding window wells that, that extend out. That's the only extension, and window wells are not included in the analysis of set, of setback. They're, they're exempt from it, so they're not included in the setback. The only increase we're doing there is in a linear fashion. If you can see in red where the, where the decks are out back, on that right side, that's getting extended in a linear fashion, no, no closer to the lot line than the existing structure. The same is, the same thing on the left side, it's going in a linear fashion, and everything else you see there is, is stone patios and walkways. So there will be no significant changes to the building, aside from windows and, and the porches. And I would submit that as a, you know, based on those changes, the porches in the back, you can't see it from the street, I would submit that the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and therefore, the special permit should issue. As to the variances, the site plan, again, shows two parking spaces in the front, and I'm going to talk about the parking setback, the parking, the front yard setback, and percentage of vegetative cover first. Again, we think it's important to locate more parking in the front, and if you look at the, the L shape of the, of the lot, kind of limits where you can put parking spaces, obviously, you can't put them in the side yard setback area. There's not enough room. We maxed out the rear yard setback area and put dimensionally compliant spaces in there. And again, we thought it was, even though we're asking for a variance for this, we thought it would be more, more beneficial to the neighborhood to have more parking. So the, the only meaningfully, meaningful place to put extra spaces is in the front. So, and I think locating there, they won't affect sightlines or anything like that, and they won't, they won't affect traffic flow. There'll be no backing out onto Washington Street, which is not allowed under our zoning ordinance anyway, as a collector street. You can see the hammerhead turnaround there. So the, the vehicles will pull in front, and then they'll back out into that hammerhead and pull out front, going forward into Washington Street. So I believe there's a hardship there based on the size and shape of the lot, the location of the building. And however, I don't think it's derogates in the intent of the zoning ordinance, because we're providing more parking, and it can be used in a safe fashion without creating a hazard on Washington Street. Same with the vegetative cover. The vegetative cover reduction is asked for due to the parking. Right now, we have the parking proposed as paved. That probably will be the case, and that is obviously an impervious surface. It's unclear whether the, the porch out back is more than five hundred square feet. I don't think it is. But if it is, obviously, they'd have to have a drainage plan done as well, because any addition over five hundred feet will require that, and it doesn't distinguish between the structure and any porches and decks. So, but for the same reasons, we ask for a variance for front yard vegetative As to the dimensional variances, same reasoning here. Again, most of these requests are due to the fact that we're changing use and therefore losing grandfathered rights, and the, the artificially high sort of steeple causing these egregiously high setback requirements, which were likely not the intent of that ordinance. So again, the only changes are windows, window wells, doors, covered, covered doors, and the only significance is the deck out back. So again, from a status quo standpoint, there are not a lot of changes happening here. And again, the hardship results from the shape of the lot, the location of the structure and the lot. in the lot, and the narrowness of the lot. And I think we're taking a dilapidated building, which is otherwise very pleasing architecturally, and bringing it back to vibrance here. If you look at it now, it's peeling paint on the outside. The inside's a really rough shape, and nobody wants to see this building raised. Again, that was a common theme among neighbors. It's kind of an iconic building when you're entering Lanesville. Everybody knows where it is. By way of comparison, we've seen this done in Gloucester before. St. Peter's Church, obviously, every situation's different, every neighborhood's different. St. Peter's Church converted to two units. And then the Wellesleyan Church, obviously, a more densely populated area on Prospect Street, that's 15 units. So that's a good example of what can happen with these type of projects. You know, those are very pleasing-looking buildings, and the churches were able to remain there. So for these reasons, we ask that the special permit and the variances issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any quick questions, or we go to public testimony, open the public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Can you take down that? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Hans Punt. I live across the street from the church.
Can you just state your address?
969 Washington Street.
Okay.
And it's nice that someone has bought the church for one, and it sounds like a great project. I have a few questions about the project.
You got to stay looking at the mic, otherwise, they won't hear you.
A few questions about the two cars in front. I just wanted to see it on the map a little better, where they might go. I'm in favor of this project. It's a beautiful church. Don't want to see it gone. It's been there a long time, and it sounds like a great project.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I have one online. David Arnold. With a hand raised, could you bring him in? David, you got to unmute.
My name is David Arnold. I'm at 966, I'm sorry, 6 Sanderson Court. I'm in favor of this project. I think they've done a great job of saving the structure.
Thank you. Thank you for coming on. Anyone else in favor?
Lynn Punt, 969 Washington Street, right across the street. Completely support keeping this beautiful church in existence.
Great.
It's important to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. This is Sarah Seber. I was the list agent for this property and fielded several offers and was...
We need your name and address first.
Oh, sure. Sarah Seber. I live at 1080 Washington Street.
Thank you.
So I was the list agent and fielded several offers and was impressed with David and his team. And like everyone is saying, it seems to have great neighborhood support, and I support the project.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Come forward.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Boudreaux-Steeves.
I can't hear you. Can you pick up the mic and talk right into it?
Okay. Lauren Boudreaux-Steeves, the owner of 4 Sanderson Court. So I am in favor of the fact that the church is being kept, but I do have some concerns about a few items that I'd like to discuss. First is the parking. Sanderson Court is a really small street. I'm sure you were there on your site visit. I think adding six more parking spaces to the back of the lot, I don't know what kind of accommodations we can make. It's going to double the traffic on the street, basically, because there's only six cars currently, I think in total, that travel that street on a regular basis. Also have some concerns about the hammerhead parking out front. I disagree a bit about it being more beneficial to the neighborhood to put parking in the front of that building. It is a beautiful building, and it would be really great that it came back to what the previous owners had, more of a wildflower garden out front. I understand there was a lot of dilapidation, the couple that owned the house. It's a big project to take on, and eventually, they certainly moved on from that. So that's a concern as well. Also, it's a pretty dangerous area to get out of. I live on Sanderson Court, so pulling out of there on a regular basis with that, coming over the crest of the hill of Washington Street there, it's not the safest street to come in and out of on a regular basis. So adding two more spots out front. If the city council does approve those two spots, I wouldn't be in favor of that. But if they did, I was wondering if there could be some restriction about making sure there was no parking allowed in the hammerhead spot, because the whole intention would be to make it safer to come out of the front of the building. Let's see, what else? As far as the impact, the most, there are three neighbors that are significantly impacted by the project. I would be one of them. The length of the building makes the decks overhanging sort of, not physically overhanging, but the position of them influences the use of my property as well. I have an in-law apartment there with my 88-year-old mother. She has a small deck off the back of our house. The decks that are proposed for this development would basically, there's no way we could protect any privacy for her. The decks are pretty large, and I understand why they might want to do that, because basically, there's no outside space once they basically utilize all of it for parking. Let's see. Yeah, so the wear and tear on the road is a concern with all the cars. I also think I said myself, and actually, the Leavens unfortunately aren't here tonight, they are probably more impacted than the Malinskys, actually, because they're going to have these two very large decks sort of just facing right at their property. And car headlights coming in and out. I mean, I know they offered Tanya a fence separator to try to protect from that. That might be something, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of them, obviously, but I think it would be a deterrent to their property as well, not having any kind of a barrier between the two properties. But again, you know, I'm trying not to be super negative, because I really do want the church to stay, and I appreciate those developers coming in and wanting to save that property, but I do have some of those additional concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You're in the hall, come forward. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand.
Hello, Tom O'Malley at 960 Washington. And the church is a beautiful canonical figure of that neighborhood, and we all want it there, and we appreciate the developers' investment in keeping that building there. But very much it seems that if we oppose the fact for four units, then that becomes a challenge to us keeping that beautiful building there. It's one or the other, which is a difficult situation, I think, to put neighbors in. I had understood, and I believe a lot of other people understood at the beginning, it was going to be three units, not four units. That was news to me, and that it was going to be that many parking spots, eight altogether. As Lauren said, Sanderson Court, as you all know, it's a very small, unpaved pathway, lane, road. Previously, it had been one family. There had been limited traffic on the road. They had two cars at the most. They had greenage in the front, which is now being proposed to be that double spot in the hammerhead, which changes and takes away that community completely. I don't know the solutions to change that, but again, we do all want to keep the building, and we appreciate everything the developers are doing to keep that, but it's coming at the cost of a lot of other things, I think. The question of it being raised is something that I don't think any of us had ever considered. But the spots at the front, the parking, especially the heavy traffic on Sanderson, which wasn't built for that level of traffic, they're just some of my considerations, not necessarily opposed to anything, but again, the move from three units to four is, was troubling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony. We'll go to rebuttal. Attorney Funtara.
Thank you. We can definitely appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but the overriding, and I think most of the opposition was sort of tepid, because we have this catch-22 where people have concerns, but they want to keep the building intact, and I completely understand that. And we're trying to find a balance to do that. And I think if you don't have parking in the front yard, you'll end up with having more traffic on Sanderson Court, and you'll have cars double parking out back. And remember, this used to be a church. So decades ago, there was a heck of a lot more traffic than there is now, obviously. But I know the neighbors have gotten used to less traffic flow due to, you know, only a single-family home being there, but we're doing our best to keep that structure in place. We're happy, if this becomes condominiums, which is a possibility, we're happy to put the master deed that parking is strictly prohibited in the hammerhead, put a sign there, there is absolutely no intent to park in the hammerhead. And that is a legit concern. I agree with that, because if people park in the hammerhead, you'll be backing out of Washington Street. So we'll certainly have no parking there whatsoever, and obviously, that could be, we'd happen to have that as a condition to this, to the relief granted. As far as the rear decks go, if you visited the site, you will see that the property had rear decks on the first and second floor. The first floor deck is still there. The second floor deck, you can kind of see a slider, and you can see where it used to be affixed to the house. That was taken down before my client bought it, but historically, it did have decks in the back, so this is nothing new. Again, we appreciate the neighbors' concern. They're valid concerns, but we do think the overriding theme seems to be they don't want the church to go. My clients have, you know, spent some time doing all they can to see what they can do to make it economically viable and keep the church, and unfortunately, the only solution is four units. I don't know if you've seen the inside of the church. It's very challenging. It's beautiful in terms of its bones, but it presents enough challenges construction-wise that they really can't make a go of it unless they have four units. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just make note for the record, we're dealing with the dimensional adjustments for the existing building and what's proposed, and that this will be, a permit for this will ultimately come from the city council at a future hearing. So people will have other opportunities as it comes to finality. Any discussion by the board, questions?
I do think this is a challenge that you've faced quite frequently with old grand buildings that have outlived their usefulness for the original purpose, in this instance, a church. And churches are quite frequently, we see them converted to residential. And I think that's the kind of the balance you have to make if you want to preserve a beautiful building and create housing. Sometimes, you know, the trade-off for that is more parking or a little bit more on the street. I, for one, I have been in this building. I know it's really quite a beautiful building, but it's really in disrepair. And I think, given the givens, it's a good trade-off to create four nice units. Not too big a project. Again, you know, as Joe said, it's the city council that has to approve the use for four units, but I think it's a good, it's a pretty good trade-off. There's not a lot of land around. I mean, you do have a hardship, you can't move the building, and the lot is what it is, and there's just not a lot of space with the I-40 zoning having, you know, and a tall steeple, 95-foot setbacks on the left, on the right, on the, you know, that, those are... So these are quite big variances that we're granting, but really, there's not going to be any change, too much of a change in the structure, except for the deck at the rear, which I imagine you need for second egresses as well as...
Yes.
Creating outdoor space. I think it looks like a really good project, all in all. I think the units look nice. I think it would be nice to preserve that building. And, you know, I think, given the givens, I'm weighing in favor of granting the relief requested to see the end result of preserving the building and creating units, so.
I would agree. I mean, I recognize those hardships as well. It was a church, so those setbacks that they need to meet, just due to the shape of the, that steeple, too. I think the parking's important to have. I don't have an issue with the parking out front as well. I think they did a good job trying to find a balance in this building and accommodating, you know, the size of it and making it a three-bedroom and a couple two-bedrooms. So I'm in support of this project.
James, you think?
Seems like a great project. No? Would just be repeating what Catherine and Peter said.
Thank you. Yeah, my, interesting comment. I don't think I've ever, in all the years, had ever had people come up and say there was too much parking. I mean, I commend you that you're putting the two extra spaces, which you didn't have to do, and I think that's a good thing. And the fact that it's in the front doesn't bother me too much with the turnaround. We can condition that it needs to be clear or condition that they can't park a third car there. And so we'll entertain a motion on the application, if everyone's ready.
Yeah, I was planning on mentioning...
We have the, you'll, yeah, we'll say that.
Yeah. On the petition of HB Development Corp., seeking special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming structure, and variances for front, rear, and side yard setbacks, lot width, area frontage, percentage of vegetative cover, and to, a variance to allow for parking in the front yard setback in order to convert a single-family home to a multi-family with four units at 964 Washington Street. I would move approval of the relief requested with the condition that there be no parking in that hammerhead, and that the agreement reached with the neighbor also be a condition, the fence, the cobblestone, and those conditions. With those conditions, I would move approval.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded for all the relief listed. Roll call vote?
Ms. Slickty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. Appreciate your help with the draft, and we'll be happy to do that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, wow.
Next up, the petition of Krima Vagfugge II LLC, seeking a special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming structure under 2.4.3 with variances pursuant to 3.2.1 for front and side yard setbacks, lot width, area, in order to demolish an existing enclosed stairway and seventh dwelling unit, to return building to prior status as two standalone three-family dwellings and construct egress stairways at equal core. For clarification, this application's before us for a number of things, some of which we don't have the authority to deal with. We can entertain the request for the front, the variances, front yard, side yard, lot width, and those type of things, only for the purpose of allowing them to apply to the city council, because... the City Council, because this is a seven-family building. Currently, they're asking to turn it into two threes or six, which is beyond our purview. We can't deal with anything above three families. I don't see the people here, the applicant. It was recommended, I guess, that being the case, we would, we, well, not knowing that they weren't going to show up, but in any case, we would have to turn down the request for the special permit to alter and expand and any reference to returning, eliminating a seventh dwelling unit to return the building, so.
Because of the number of units it needs for the City Council?
It's got to be go to the City Council.
Huh, even though they're already existing?
That's what
Because it's a change of use.
Legal's telling us.
Yeah.
It's technically a change of use.
Yeah.
The dimensional requirements kick in, but then the whole idea of approving an alter and expand of a sixth unit, even if it was a sixth unit, still not in our
We can't. We can't do six units, yeah. But we would probably have to do, like, grant a variance from the footnote that says you can't have two principal dwellings on a lot.
That would be a variance also, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They can't subdivide the lot.
But I don't know that we, even though that's a footnote, I don't, it comes under our purview.
Oh, because, yeah.
I don't know if it was like two single families or one and two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But beyond three families, I don't think we can use that.
Yeah.
You know, so I think in this instance, we're, I don't know whether we should continue or hear, you know, bring it up without them here and make a, and vote down those pieces of it, you know. But they're not here to make the case for the
Yeah, yeah, I think we'd have, I would, I would like to hear from them before we vote.
I mean, they're, they have a legal representation, a big firm, so.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Huh.
Yeah, they were, which is what kind of bugs me. You know who they are.
Yeah.
Harry Armstrong. Yeah, Johnson and Bornstein. They're a big outfit, I mean. They should have been here.
I would, only a motion to continue or vote it down because they're not here or seems like, I mean, that seems
Want to hear the next petition and then make a decision at the end?
Well, so what I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to penalize, if we vote, if we vote, maybe we shouldn't hear the dimensional requirements yet, but make it clear how are they going to know that we can't deal with, you know.
The use.
The use change.
Yeah.
Special permit.
Yeah.
How do we do that and then notify them? I could have legal notify.
Yeah, and then we'll just, when they come and present, we can grant, if we agree to grant relief, then just grant them the relief that we're capable of giving them. They'll have to go to City Council for the rest.
This came up out of a court agreement that they were going to have to bring everything into compliance, including the building and zoning. This is the method they've chose, but it's wrong.
Okay, okay.
So I guess we're
So this has been in court with the city over the use and code violations or
All the violations.
Okay, okay.
What's the point of continuing if it's all wrong? Just have them reapply?
Well, because if they're going to go to the council, we will hear the laudary, you know, the setbacks.
The dimensionality.
And I don't, if we turn that down, it precludes them from coming back for two years. So I don't want to do that. Let's continue.
Okay.
I'll have legal talk to them.
Okay. I move to continue the petition for Eight Gold Court.
Did you say the name?
Two. When's our next meeting?
On 30th.
January 30th.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to continue. Roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Okay, that's continued. Our final hearing is the petition of Wayne Olson, seeking a determination of no increase in nonconformity pursuant to 2.4.4, or in the alternative, a special permit under 2.4.3 to alter and expand a nonconforming structure in order to add two additions to a single-family home at Two Edgewood Road. I believe it's Attorney for, oh, Aiden's here.
Evening. Just getting set up here for one second. They are with me. Okay, for the record, my name is Aiden Church. I'm an attorney with Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm here tonight on behalf of Wayne Olson and his wife, Liz. I believe Wayne and/or Liz are with us online tonight. If you have any questions that I can't answer, so we're here to
There's a lot of people online watching you.
A lot of people here, a lot of people here watching me as well, so.
Yeah.
So we're here tonight seeking to construct an addition on either side of the existing single-family home. There's a single-family, I mean, a single-level addition on one side and a second-level addition on the opposite side. So we're in the R20 district. It's a pre-existing nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot. It's a corner lot. It fronts on Essex Avenue and, actually, I'm forgetting the name of the side street there.
Edgewood.
Edgewood, yes, the actual address of the property, yes. So it has two, two front yards, so we're technically nonconforming as relates to the Edgewood front yard, or nine feet from the property line where 30 feet are required, and the existing lot's undersized as well. So we're seeking, as you said, a determination of no increase in nonconformity, or in the alternative, a special permit to alter and expand. Just a little background on the relief here. So as you see in the site plan here, the red dash line is the actual buildable envelope of the lot due to the two front yards. So the 30-foot front yards really put us into a small envelope there. So the green addition here on what is the left side, if you're looking at it from Essex Avenue, that's the single-level addition that's fully conforming. And then on the right side, the back right, if you're looking at it here, there's a second level addition, and then on the first level, there's a small bump out to relocate the front door, and that is obviously in the, in the front yard setback area. So I have the plans here. I set them up in such a way, I think it's a little easier to see them than the actual plan set that you guys have there. I have that at the end if you need me to go back or have any questions. So here's the basement plan. As you can see, existing verse proposed. The top addition here is actually the left side of the structure, if you're looking at it from Essex Avenue. So that is a single level, but it actually has a walkout basement as well, so you get some habitable area on the basement level. And then down here is just the, that's the foundation for the new, the doorway entrance. So here's the first floor, existing verse proposed. And again, that's the single-level addition here. Everything else is existing except for that front door bump out on the right side, and then the brand-new second floor over here on the far right. And then so here's the, the front and the rear view with the existing versus the proposed. And then here's where you really can sort of understand what's going on. The left side of the structure, where you have the single-level addition and the walkout is up here on the top right. And then looking at it from the Edgewood side is the second level, second level addition. So here's just an aerial view of the property, base map, and then here is a picture of the property, and this is from Essex Avenue, looking at what would technically be one of the, one of the fronts, but that's the primary front where they park, so. And then here, you can see where it's sort of the, the house is L-shaped. That's what's getting filled in with the, the single-level addition, and that's the conforming addition right there. So you can determine that it doesn't increase any nonconformity and that we wouldn't need a special permit. We usually ask you to look at, you know, what, what are the existing nonconformities? And those are circled on the right here in green. It's, you know, half the house is technically in that Edgewood, Edgewood Road front yard setback, setback. And then what are the, what are the nonconformities after the addition? If you look back at the site plan, you'll see that that bump out is just carrying that line of the existing structure. It's not increasing the encroachment at all. And then obviously, the second-level addition is there as well, which you'll see in this view. So that, you know, about half of that is, is in the setback area. So that said, you know, the two nonconformities are that the lot is undersized. That's obviously not changing. And the nine-yard, the nine-foot distance from the property line is also not changing. That's going to remain the same. So we think that you can grant a determination of no increase in nonconformity, but if you decide that that second-level addition does increase because it's increasing mass in the, in the setback area, we still think that we meet the standard for a special permit, which is obviously that it can't be more detrimental, can't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming nature of the property. And here, as I said, the single-level addition on the left side of the structure is fully conform, fully dimensionally compliant, so that's, that doesn't matter anyways. And then, as I said, the addition in the setback area on the Edgewood roadside is mostly vertical. There's a small bump out that, you know, doesn't, doesn't do a lot for the neighborhood. And then if you look at the overhead view, the adjacent properties are, you know, pretty great distance away. Here, looking at it, it's the left side, if you're looking at it from here, is what is actually in the, in the setback area. And that house to the left is over 250 feet away, and they're the ones that would be most impacted. So, you know, we don't think that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because realistically, nobody's really going to see, you'll see it, but it's not going to impact them at all. And then here's just a picture of the house again from that. This, this is the side of the house that is nonconforming currently, and you don't see any neighbors around that will even, you know, it won't impact anybody at all, so. So again, we're asking for determination or in the alternative, a special permit. And, you know, that's all, so.
Thank you. So I'm going to have the public testimony before we make the determination, to get it out of the way. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, can you take down the, was that you up?
Oh, Aiden.
Can you take that down?
Sorry.
I just can't see otherwise. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Either raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And no one, we'll close the public hearing and open discussion about the nonconformity.
I don't think it's creating a larger nonconformity. I think it's still sitting within those lines, right?
So if Michael was here, he would make the case because it's a much more massive, taller than the existing.
I would, too.
That's what I originally would have thought.
You have
And then I'm like
It, it would be an increase because when it became a nonconformity, it was certain height. And now you're, even though your, your addition is in the same line according to Dietrich, but it is much more massive. So we could say that the mass is an increase in nonconformity, still not substantially more detrimental. No reason he wouldn't get the special permit, but that's, if I didn't mention that, Michael would be mad.
Right, and I, and I, I agree with that, too. I mean, there's just more structure, more density, more bulk in that nonconforming area. So I think it does intensify it. I don't think it's substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity, so I would move approval for the special permit.
Let's, first, we're going to make a motion that
It is an increase in the non
Well, so the motion will be that it's not an increase, but then you could vote it down. It has to be a positive motion.
All right.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's make a motion to determine that it's not substantially, because that's what they requested, I guess.
But I do think
Vote either way.
I do think it is an increase in the nonconformity.
I know, so you'd vote no.
Oh, okay.
So Make a motion.
I make a, well, yeah, I'll make a motion in the petition of Wayne Olson that this is an increase.
Or determination of no increase.
Or determination of no increase in the nonconformity, okay?
Second.
So we have a motion made and seconded on the request of determining there's no increase in nonconformity. Roll call vote. A no vote says there is a increase in nonconformity.
Mr. Canavo?
No.
Mr. Gelati?
No.
Ms. Schlichty?
No.
Mr. Parisi?
No. But we have decided that there is an increase in nonconformity. Entertain a motion for the special permit to alter and expand nonconforming structure.
I move on the petition of Wayne Olson, I, I move approval for the special permit to alter, expand a nonconforming structure to allow the two additions to a single-family home at Two Inglewood Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for a special permit. Roll call vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for a special permit.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. Entertain a draft. I so wished I could let you have got the determination that it wasn't an increase because we never give it to Joel. I was hoping to be able to give it to him.
He gets them occasionally, so. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
No other new business? Any, anything anyone wants to bring up?
No.
No. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
We did do
We already did that.
Oh, we did it.
Were you here?
I lied.
Motion to adjourn.
You guys really messed me up with that last one. I wasn't prepared.
I wasn't either.
Is a motion to adjourn on the floor?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, we are officially adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.